Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March first meeting of the Board Supervisor Lower Makefield Townsend. This is the interview section of the meeting and right now we will be interviewing Mitch Palin for the Historic Commission. Mitch, is Mitch in the room or is he online?
I'm here.
Hello Mitch.
Greetings.
We can't see you right now on the screen, but thank you for your
I'm really here.
There you are, there you are. Now we found you. Welcome and thank you for volunteering for the historic commission. We read your interview, we know your letter of interest and at this point, I think since the the liaison is in the room, I'll let Supervisor Lewis start the question.
So Mitch, thank you so much for coming out today. I read through your resume and I was excited to talk to you, not about the Historical Commission, but your prior work history in retail, which is fascinating. Okay. As I was going through, I'm like, oh my gosh, Gimbal's.
I know, that's, listen.
If there's a history of retail to be written, you've worked at many of those companies.
John Wanamaker.
Yes.
Also someplace I worked for a while.
And John Wanamaker was the guy who said that 50% of marketing is wasted. I just don't know which 50%. One of the most important sort of quotes in marketing. But tell me a little bit about what piqued your interest in the Historic Commission and what kinds of things specifically in Lower Makefield are piquing your interest? I know we've got a lot of stuff, but I was just curious if something special from your perspective.
I moved here about two and a half years ago. My daughter lives down in Langhorne.
Okay.
She's been there for about 10 years. Couple of grandkids came along and we were close to retirement and COVID knocked my wife and I out of going back to work. She was an ER nurse, which is where she got sick and I ultimately got it from her. Right in the beginning in March of 2020, she was in the hospital for 10 weeks. I mean, she was sick for 10 weeks in the hospital for four days. I avoided the hospital, but I was sick for quite a while. This is before anybody knew what it was or anything.
Was she before the 17th of March or after?
13th was the day we were, she was sent to the hospital on the 15th.
Wow. Okay, yeah, and that's before all the treatments, before vax. Oh my gosh.
We had planned on, we actually bought a house down here in April of 2019 and we had a tenant in it. Eventually we were going to retire in the next year or two and move down here. We'd been through with my daughter and we drove around looking in Yardley and checking out. And I've always liked seeing older homes and I'm always curious, you know, their history, what they've done, where they've been like. I found out that you have the tavern in town here, that Town Hill Tavern, it has an underground was used for the Underground Railroad, whether it was or it wasn't, I don't know.
Well, that in the, that's Yardley Borough, but the building next to it, there's a yellow house that you see, that was also used as part of the Underground Railroad. There's like, next on the other side.
History that, you know, unless you're looking for it, you're really not going to know it. And my interest is basically in a couple of things. One of my hobbies is photography. And I'd love to be able to help out and, you know, be available to take photographs and I had a printing business for 13 years, so I'm very familiar with graphic arts and being able to use that to the benefit of some marketing situation. I know you guys probably are going out there trying to find funding for certain things and maybe that could be of some help where
Yeah.
That that ability can be something you guys can use. I'd love to see some of these older places. There's a place right here on River Road. I don't know the name of the house, but it's near the park. And they've been working on it since I've been out here. And it just seems like it's never going to get finished. And every time I drive by that house, I'm like, gee, I'd love to go in there and see what it's like. It's just such a cool looking place. And you drive around the borough and there's, you know, I mean, around, around Lower Makefield and there's just so many of these buildings from the early 18th century, you know, and on that I'm just curious about them. And when I saw the ad posted on Facebook, I was like, wow. I've been looking for something to fill my time and do a little volunteer work. My wife and I had done some work for BCOC, done some volunteering last spring. We're going to do a little bit more of that this spring. But that's just, you know, one day a week and I'm retired, so I'm looking for things to fill in and this just seemed like something up my alley.
Awesome. I don't want to dominate the time here, so I'll yield to Chair Weiss if you've got someone else who wants.
That's fine. Thanks, thanks, Dan.
Sure, I'll be brief. Thank you, first of all, for coming in and throwing your hat in the ring to help us here in town. You pretty much answered the question I like to ask about what ideas do you have to add to the existing group? We have a great group of volunteers. Some of them are actual historians. So they're, they're really knowledgeable about all these, these places. But mixing up the skillsets on these boards and commissions is nice so that we can, you know, get, get even more value out of them. So you're, I like the idea about, about the photography and whatnot. I think the house you're talking about may have been on an HGTV show. Maybe Stonehouse Revital? I can't remember the name of it.
Oh.
But you could, I'll say Google it, but I can't remember which.
One, they did one room, Dan.
They, okay. So you could, you could see inside it a little bit if you, if you.
Well, I, I, once in a while I see some trucks in there doing work and, you know, and I've seen the place cleaned up a lot on the outside, but and every time I go by, I'm like, I just wonder what's the history of this house? I mean, why is it still here when many of them are not? You know, why did it last this long?
No, it's, and this group does a great job at that. So I, I don't have any other questions for you, but again, thank you for coming in and I'm sure they'll have some other great questions for you.
Okay.
Thanks, James.
I don't have any questions, Mitch. Just thank you so much for taking the time to apply and hopefully we can use your assets.
I'm hoping I can be of some service and help everything out and get some good information going for, I think it's important that you know about a little bit of the history of the place you live, especially a place that's so steeped and enriched in history. Great. Share, I'd be glad to be part of that.
Suzanne?
Yeah, I, I don't have anything. I'm, I'm stuck with John, right? Fortunoff, Gimbal's, I'm, I'm from Queens. Yeah, I remember going to Fortunoff to get my bedding for college, so exciting, so.
Is that in Brooklyn Fortunoff or the one on Long Island?
Long Island, Long Island, yeah. But so you brought back a lot of happy memories with your resume and thank you for raising your hand to volunteer.
Fortunoff is a great place. I loved working there.
Nothing like it.
Great company. I mean, they, unfortunately they had a lot of bad things happen around.
The family could not play well together.
Family never did. I, I actually worked directly for one of the family members, so I know how those politics were. I knew when to turn around and walk the other way and when to just put my head down and then let the kids, as we used to call them, fight with each other.
I'm glad you and your wife are, are better.
Crazy times. Covid, but we're, we're doing all right.
Me, me, I'm with you dude.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. We will, you will be hearing from us in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, great. I look forward to it.
Appreciate it. Thanks again.
Talk to me.
Good night. Do we have Lisa in the room or is Lisa online?
Not yet. I think he's.
He says online.
Is she?
Coming online.
Yep.
There we go.
Hello, Lisa.
Good evening.
Thank you for volunteering and appearing before us tonight for your interview for the Star Commission. I always like to start off with the supervisor liaison. In this case, it's Mr. Lewis. Mr. Lewis, would you like to start the question?
Okay, Lisa, well, you know me, I'm John. And I believe we were, both of our kids were on the CYO St. Ignatius track team?
No. We do know each other from St. Ignatius. I taught prep there for 34 years.
Oh boy. Okay, well, now I should begin with an apology if you had one of my children. A kid, I don't.
John, you take all my lines all the time.
That went out with the, yeah. We got them both through, so we got that going first. What sparked your interest in the Historic, Historical Commission and?
Well, first I have to apologize. I had dental work done today, so half my face is frozen still. I was, I've been here since 1979. I'm a Pensbury High School graduate, went to University of Pennsylvania where I majored in English and History. I worked as an archivist assistant at the Annenberg Television Script Archives and I have extensive experience in document preservation and later digitization. So when I saw on the list of things that the township was looking for the Historic Commission to do and saw that document conservation was something that they'd been trying to get for the last 15 years and hadn't had a person. I said, okay, well, I should step up and do this because I actually have all my own equipment. I just had finished a major project for the Yardleyville Protective Association for the Pursuit and Detection of Horse Thieves and Other Villains. Pat Miller, I'm sure you all remember her. She and I were both very active in there. I've been a member for 30 years, but on the board for 17 years. But also there's something called the Grand Consolidated. And it is also started in the 1860s and all of their documents were crumbling and I said, you know, the average age of the members is AARP age at this point. So we need to digitize these and get them out there for the younger generations. And so that's something I would like to see for Lower Makefield and I'm experienced in doing it. So when I saw it was on the list of to things that the wishlist of things that they were, hope a new member could do. That's why I said, well, let me see if they're interested in me.
And you also have the skill around the indexing and OCR part of that as well then?
Yes.
Oh, awesome.
I've used optical character recognition software for different, I, in my, in my world as a management consultant, there were a lot of times where I would scan documents and be able to do word searches because it was easier for me than trying to memorize them. And I could just do bump, 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 bump and bring it up right away. I learned, I worked as an expert witness for some cases, legal cases. And I was able to just bring stuff up instantly without having to rely on total recall.
Yeah. I mean, I have a lot more, but I want to, because in the interest of time, offer up for, I guess, Dan, are you next on the list or?
Yeah, we might as well just go around like before.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dan.
Wel- welcome Lisa. First thing, and everyone's going to groan when I say this, but you can never have enough University of Pennsylvania grads on any of our advisory boards and committees.
Go Quakers.
Go Quakers. I'll start with that. Otherwise, I'm really, your skillsets are really interesting and could be a great asset, as, as I think you already know, to our, excuse me, to our Historical Commission. I don't really have any questions around that. I, I, I work with a lot of cultural resources professionals who, who, who do some of that work as well. So I understand what you're doing and I think it's something we could use. And I think the Historical Commission could find good use for it, among other things. So other than that, I'll just say thank you for taking some time to come chat with us tonight. And I'll pass, pass you off to the next person, but thanks again.
James?
Thank you. Lisa, thanks again for throwing your name in the, in the ring. I, I think that what you have to offer would be a huge asset to the township. To piggyback on what Dan said, I would love to see a Pensbury grad on one of our commissions, so.
Go Falcons.
Go Falcons. Thank you very much.
Good save, James.
I'm doomed. Just also thank you, but I do have to ask, because I Googled, you know, in preparation for tonight, what, what are the Yardville people protecting against who? Like what is, what, what is that?
So in 1863, a lot of the young men came back from Civil War and couldn't find jobs. And people were coming across the river from Trenton and they were robbing people in Yardley Borough, Lower Makefield, Newtown and Emily. Emily have since been absorbed into Levittown. So these organizations developed as insurance policies. There were no full-time police available to create a posse. You know, when I first moved to Lower Makefield, the police station was only open from nine to five during the week. And you had to call Chief Ronaldo at his farm. If you had something happened over after hours or call the state police. So if you imagine 1863, there was even fewer staff available. So this insurance company was created to form a posse. Everybody kicked in three bucks, which back then was a small fortune. And if they could not recover your horse that was stolen or your chickens, or if your house was broken into, then the, the pool of money would be spent to reimburse you. And so Newtown has the oldest one in the area. They're the Newtown Reliant Club. They are men only and they still exist. And then Emily in Levittown and Yardleyville in Lower Makefield slash Yardley Borough and Morrisville. We are since 1863. So if your horse gets stolen, I'll be on your posse.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lisa. We really appreciate it. You'll hear from us in the next two weeks.
Thank you so much.
Have a great night.
You too.
Feel better.
Okay, let's take a short recess, about two minutes. And then we'll reconvene for the business part of the meeting.
Sounds good.
Welcome back to the business part of March first Board Supervisors Meeting. We will call to order and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'll take the role Supervisor Lewis.
Present.
Supervisor Granier.
Here.
Supervisor Blondie.
Here.
Supervisor McCartney.
Present.
And I am here. We have a farm. Public comment on agenda items will be taken as each item is discussed. Community announcements. Is there anyone online or in the room for a public announcement? I'll read what I have. Lower Makefield Township will be hosting a blood drive for the Red Cross on Friday, March tenth. From one o'clock to six o'clock PM at the meeting room at Township Building. Eleven hundred Edgewood Road Yardley PA, which we all know and love. I also. I also, excuse me. Have the pleasure to inform you that the son of John F Shay the third, which is who is John F Shay the fourth. A graduating student of Pensbury High School. And a recently made private pilot. And someone who will be getting his Eagle Scout Award in the near future. Has just been granted an appointment to the United States Air Force Academy. So John the fourth, congratulations from the whole board. Is there any other member of the board that has an announcement? To them.
Yeah, it's it's a little bit of a weird announcement because it's personal, but I want to thank everybody who's inquired about my health. I'm doing really well. I am officially a long hauler from COVID. And so that's why you see me going off camera frequently as. The cough etc takes over, but thank you so much for everybody who's who's asked and it's all good, but it. It's been a long haul. So, thank you.
And hope you get better soon. Any other announcements from the board? Hearing none, I will go to item number five. Consider approval of minutes for the February fifteenth meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Moved second.
Motion to prove made by Supervisor Granier, second by Supervisor Lewis. Any discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye.
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 Eyes have a five zero. Thank you. But item six engineers report, Ms. Bachel.
Yes, hello supervisors. You have within your packet my engineer's report. I would like to start with the. Agenda item A. Which is to consider pay application number three for the Skyler Drive Tennis Court Project Keystone Sports Construction. In the amount of eighty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. This is the third payment of four. And it was due upon completion of the asphalt paving. That work was completed and therefore it's appropriate to recommend payment in that amount.
So moved.
Second.
An app motion made by Supervisor Blondie, seconded by Supervisor Lewis for pay application number three to be approved. Any discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Eyes have a five zero.
Thank you. Next item would be to consider change order number six. For the twenty twenty-two road program to James D Morrissey in the amount of four thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. This is for line striping and road pavement markings on King's Road. And East Ferry Road as outlined by the Traffic Safety Unit. And the work has been completed.
May I hear a motion to approve?
I missed your I moved. Oh, second.
Motion made by Supervisor Blondie, seconded by Supervisor Lewis. Any discussion?
Right, just a quick question if you don't mind.
Sure.
Line striping another item. So it's a change order for additional fees. Is this? Are these addition? Is this additional line striping or new line striping or something that wasn't in the original budget or just they had to do?
This was additional line striping that was. Requested by the Township Traffic Safety Unit. So it was out of scope on different roads than what was originally in the road paving program.
Just want to make sure verification.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those favor to approve change order six. Signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye.
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 Eyes have a five zero. Item C.
Item C is to consider change order number seven for the twenty twenty-two road program to James D Morrissey, Inc. In the amount of sixty-seven thousand seventy-seven dollars and eleven cents. This is for the inclusion of the asphalt escalator. Clause or the asphalt escalator price clause. This is as this project was a liquid fuels. Reimbursement Program project by PennDOT. Were subject to administering the the payment for the project in accordance with PennDOT requirements. And this is one such clause where. The when the contractor bids on the project, they there's a certain asphalt price index. Established at the time of the bid. And then if the asphalt index price is higher when they place the asphalt. Then the contractor is entitled to compensation for the additional price of asphalt. So we've documented that with tickets that we've received from when they've placed the asphalt, confirmed it with. The quantities that were placed out in the field and therefore. We've gone through the the calculation that is recommended by PennDOT. In order to to determine the amount. So we are recommending approval of this change order in the amount of sixty-seven thousand seventy-seven dollars and eleven cents.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I can.
Motion made by Supervisor Blondie, segmented by Supervisor Granier for approval of change order number seven. Any discussion? Any public comment?
Fred, one real quick question. It's it's sort of all encompassing since it's change order for the road program. We we have a couple of large payments and actually a pretty good size. Negative in a good way. Credit, God, I think of the word. We have pretty good sized credit. So generally. Are we looking like we're in budget, under budget, over budget across the board?
We're we're under budget.
That's all I want. Thank you.
Any other comments, discussion of the board? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of change order number seven be paid, signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have a five zero. Thank you. Item D.
Item D is to consider change order number eight for the twenty twenty-two road program to James D Morrissey, Inc. In the amount of a credit to the township. Of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents. This is to balance the quantities of from what was in the original bid versus what was placed in the field. And so. Sticking to our review and inspection and monitoring of the the work completed. Again, that equals a credit in the amount of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents. That would complete all the change orders for the road program. And the final tally would be three million seventy-seven thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and seven cents. I believe originally the the budget was around three point one million dollars. So. To further clarify on your question there, it would be about twenty-two thousand dollars under budget.
Great. Do I hear a motion to approve change order number eight?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Granier, segmented by Supervisor Lewis. Do we have any discussion by the board? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the credit to township for two hundred and eighty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have a five zero. Item E.
Item E is to consider the pay application number six for the twenty twenty-two road program to James D Morrissey, Inc. In the amount of one million forty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-six cents. This is a semifinal pay application there after this pay. After this payment is made, there will be approximately sixty-one thousand dollars in change. Still being retained and that's to address any some minor punch list items that the contractor still needs to address.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Granier, seconded by Supervisor Blondie to pay to approve pay application number six. Any discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Five zero eyes have it. Item F.
Item F is to consider the award recommendation for the twenty twenty-three pool painting project to American Pool. In the amount of one hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy cents. We opened bids on February twenty-second. And we received two bids. The apparent low bidder was American Pool. After reviewing the bids, they do. They do seem in line with each other. There's nothing that indicates that. There was anything nefarious or bid rigging going on. So. So we are recommending the the price is high. It's it's over the budget, but. We believe this work is is necessary and therefore we're recommending award.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to approve. The pool painting project made by Supervisor Blondie, seconded by Supervisor McCartney. Any discussion?
A couple of quick questions. Instead of we're over budget, what was the original budget for this one?
So I believe there was ninety thousand dollars that was budgeted for this in the twenty twenty-three adopted budget.
Twenty-five to thirty K over.
Yeah, yeah. There is. And again, we can sort of have a broader discussion. There was also. Funds that were allocated and Monica can can add as 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 necessary. That were allocated to make some improvement to the restroom facilities at the pool. We're continuing to to sort of look at that because the scope of that project is probably. Much broader than what was initially perhaps contemplated. And so. While we understand that, you know, the the pool bathroom facilities are obviously. Amenity that our customers interact with, we do obviously need to be smart in terms of our investment in that facility. And so. The scope of those improvements are likely to exceed the the budget that was allocated. And we may have to reevaluate that. So to the extent that there's reevaluation of that project. There's additional funds in the budget to 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 address the overage associated with pool painting, which is something that does need to need to be done.
Sort of, am I correcting some? Excuse me, summarizing that basically money goes from paying to the bathrooms to paying in the pool.
Our recommendation at this point would be given. Given what needs to happen with the restroom facilities that we would reallocate funds to the pool painting, which which again is is sort of a necessary maintenance item.
What what's the I'm forgetting? What's the funding source that we're applying to this project in the bathrooms?
Good.
It was from it was from the sewer sale.
It was from that. Okay.
So.
So both projects were from the sewer sale, correct?
Painting was not. That was part of the.
Painting was an.
Any of the pool was part of the budget. Bathrooms are part of the square. So.
Yes.
Okay, that's I thought there was a difference there. Okay.
Any other discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of painting the pool for one hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-seven seventy cents signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have a five zero. Thank you, Andy. Go ahead, item seven Parks and Rec.
Hey Fred, before you start that, when when in the agenda is it appropriate to ask Andy for some updates on a couple of projects that he's working on right now?
You can ask him that.
Okay, I didn't want to cut you off. A couple of ongoing ones that I know are underway because I visited them the last couple of days. It looks like the Woodside Road Bike Path is well underway. Any any key items you want to highlight there?
Yeah, it is. So they they've they've begun excavation. They're installing stormwater. Facilities for that excavating for the vegetated swales that are running next to the trail. They did encounter some excessive topsoil in in the areas up by the golf course. So they had to undercut and and put some stone down in order to provide a stabilized base. So. We expect that to be a change order. We're going to review that and process that in the upcoming weeks. But other than that, they're proceeding with the work.
And from a schedule perspective for folks that are driving along that road. I've seen they scheduled to end. End in May twenty-three, May.
Yeah, they they've previously indicated that they're. Going to end by May and I don't see any. They haven't done anything that's changed that that schedule.
And then the other one that I get asked a lot about is we work on Maple Vale. I know there's an HOP that you're going after.
Yeah, there's a highway occupancy permit from PennDOT that we are still waiting on. I actually had a. A conversation with the reviewer from PennDOT today. And it seemed like a permit was going to be issued imminently. So hopefully by the end of the week, we'll have the permit and. I've already reached out to the contractor to notify them that the permits. Coming down the pipe, no pun intended, and. And hopefully they can get mobilized and and get out there and get this finished up.
And it sounds like there are a couple of. Utilities that are doing projects, I think on the township Facebook page recently, maybe a few weeks out, but I think Aqua was doing some work. For people to look out for. And I forget the other one I saw, but I don't know if anyone has any info on that.
I I don't that that's that's been outside my purview.
Okay, just checking. That's all I have. Thanks, Fred.
And just just one additional update as it relates to Maple Vale. As you'll recall, the board did execute a change order as a result of that unmarked Verizon Regional Duck Bank. We were able to interface with Verizon. Verizon is going to be reimbursing the township for the cost associated with with that conflict. So. That payment is is forthcoming. In addition to the change order or the the change order that you the change order cost that you approved. Obviously, there was also some redesign work that that Andy's firm would have done in order to to make the modifications that were necessary. Verizon through their insurance carrier also will be reimbursing the township for those expenses as well. So just just for the board's information.
Great. Great. Any other uh requests for project updates by the board? Hearing none, we'll go to item seven, Parks and Rec. Ms. Tierney?
Uh hi, everyone. Today I'm here to um have you review and approve the fees for um or the pay scale for pool and camp. Um this is the pay scale that was set last year um as part of the pay rate change. Um plus we allocated an extra three percent increase as part of the budgeting process. So all of that has already been um you know, accounted for in the budget, but I did want to bring to you the pay rates today um as we expand camp. Um you know, we tried to align the camp rates with the pool rates, so um it makes sense across the board as far as the parks and recreation. The one thing I do want to bring to your attention is at the pool, sometimes we transition. So say we identify an employee who is, say, head guard or assistant manager material, we might bump them, give them a little increase while we transition them into a managerial role. So there are some times that we we don't necessarily pay them the full twenty-two while they're they're learning the role and um but we are trying to transition them uh into that position by the end of the year. For instance, um a lot of college students go away in August, so we try to fill those roles as as we move through. So I guess today I'm asking for your approval for the pool and camp employee rates as you see in your packet.
Do I hear a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-three pool and camp employee rates?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Blondie, seconded by Supervisor Lewis to approve the two thousand and twenty-three pool and camp employee pay rates. Any discussion? Ms. Lewis?
Uh first, how comfortable we are, are we with staffing for this year? Do we think we've got the right pay rate to attract enough employees to be uh fully covered?
Yes, we have plenty of applications all the way across the board, should be okay.
So, okay, that's good. So then we bid the right amount then, I suppose, for employees if we have more than.
Yeah, uh we did well. I I will, we we did well. We also do a great job of training our employees, so people come back, um we treat them very well. Um so we have that as far as longevity.
Okay.
Retent.
Yeah, so from a market perspective, um you know, Monica has indicated that our rates in certain categories are are lower than market. Um but again, as as Monica just articulated, um our commitment to training, our commitment to uh providing a positive employee experience, all of that is is have is is enabling us to still remain competitive despite, you know, maybe a slight variation from a market perspective.
So I guess Lower Makefield pools are a great place to work.
I'd like to say.
Any other discussion by the board or staff? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those uh of of approving the two thousand and twenty-three pool uh and camp employee rates, please signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have a five zero. Thank you, Ms. Tierney.
Thank you.
I'm going to item eight, manager's report. Mr. Grazer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh members of the board. Uh the first item uh for your consideration is ratification confirmation of the purchase of a wide area mower uh from Central Jersey Equipment LLC uh at a cost of sixty-eight thousand, nine sixty-nine thirty-three. Uh the mower is procured uh via uh an existing CoStar's contract.
Mr. Chair, I move that we ratify and confirm the purchase of a wide area mower from Central Jersey Equipment LLC at a cost of sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents via CoStar contract number four, four, zero, 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 two, zero, eight, five.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Blondie, purchase of the wide area mower. Any discussion? Any public comment?
Oh, Fred, really? Sorry, I wasn't sure enough. Um David, can you clarify, did we or or purchased another mower a few meetings ago, or is this the same one?
Yeah, no. So there was a smaller mower, um roughly around twelve thousand, if I'm recalling, uh that uh that was purchased. This is um and in the context of that conversation, I think we mentioned that there was going to be an additional mower. Um and and this is, this is a second mower that was necessary.
Would this be more of a, given the cost and wide areas that more tractor-like than than mower-like, you think?
Yeah, I mean Monica may be able to comment on it, but but yes, um it 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 there's more efficiency, obviously, in terms of area being able to be covered with with a mower of this size.
Is this strictly for, you know, we we have Public Works versus, oh, yeah, versus Park and Rec staff? So this is strictly for Park and Rec staff to use at our parks essentially, okay? And do we, does our since we all wear this, I'll use the Park and Rec term, we all wear the same Lower Makefield jersey here?
Yep.
This is this one that if needed, could we?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. Yep, yep.
Thank you.
And Public Works had some general involvement also in just sort of the procurement process as well, um just to make sure that um again, we're sort of coordinating maintenance and 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 those types of sort of operational considerations, yes.
Any other discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor to uh approve the purchase signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have a five zero. Kind of big?
So the next item for the board's consideration is uh an investment policy statement uh for the Lower Makefield Township Trust. Uh as uh you'll recall, uh back at your first meeting in February, uh you authorized entering into um a trust agreement uh to make an initial contribution to the Lower Makefield Township Trust uh from the sanitary sewer sale proceeds. Uh and the amount of um the initial contribution amount was was in uh the amount of ten million dollars. Uh since that action, um we've been working with uh PNC and um Obermeyer uh to um sort of implement that that decision of 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 the board. Um so again, this evening uh for your consideration is an investment policy statement that previously was shared uh with uh with the board. Um before you consider that, just just um a general update, um the 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 money, the the initial contribution amount has been transferred to PNC, so it is in PNC's custody at this point. It's it's in a money market account uh earning uh a rate of of four point four percent. So there's there's yield uh that's been realized uh during um during this implementation phase. Um but again, this document before you would would uh govern uh the investment um sort of posture uh of those monies uh and uh again, to to generate uh some additional return um while at the same time, you know, maintaining uh principal um in in the uh in the trust uh instrument. So um we would recommend um adoption of of the provided investment policy statement for the trust. Happy to try to answer any questions they may have.
Do I hear a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Su- Supervisor Blondie, seconded by Supervisor McCartney. Any discussion by the board?
Fred, may I?
Su- yeah, Supervisor.
Don't want to jump um. It generally, I guess, maybe this might be a question for our solicitor, maybe maybe to our township manager. Um this statement passes muster from a second-class township code perspective and and everything else.
It I did look at the uh initial document that was prepared by Obermeyer. It appears to be consistent with that, or at least not inconsistent with it. So I think, uh given the fact that they had done all their review early on with that, I think it certainly passes muster in terms of that uh that that structure, yes.
And and otherwise, just for folks watching, it's generally a low-cost ETF approach in terms of investment approach. It's not overly managed with high fees, which
Sure.
advise fees, I think, important for people to hear.
Yep, yeah. Yeah, yes, answered, answered question, yes. And to Dave's point, um you know, the document we work with PNC, um uh obviously uh focusing on the the terms of the trust agreement, making sure there was consistency, making sure there was recognition of perhaps some of the nuances uh of of uh the trust that was established uh through the uh through the trust agreement. Um but yeah, this this is essentially outlining the respective roles of folks that are involved, um both uh from uh you know, from a board standpoint, from an investment committee standpoint, uh from an investment advisor standpoint. So it's 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 fairly um standard and and consistent with what you would see, uh for example, when you're when you're investing funds in a in a in a pension fund, um where you have to you know, meet long-term obligations. Um but yes, the the investment vehicles that are contemplated um are are relatively low-cost um uh ETFs, as you said, and uh um thank you to Supervisor Lewis for that one recommendation in terms of changing because we were able to reduce um some of the some of the fees even further with uh with an alternative that was what was suggested.
With three basis points at ten million.
Yeah, yes.
Every bit counts.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Any other discussion or comments by the board?
Just just a quick one.
Sure.
Just for those who are curious about this, this is very much a moderate-risk approach in terms of investment funds. It is um less risk, for example, than I would personally take uh in terms of investment. So it's about seventy percent equities is the max with a target around fifty percent uh with a mix between, you know, uh large cap, mid-cap, and then uh non-US sources as well, but a hefty fixed income and a and a small portion of cash.
Any other discussion or comments above board? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor to adopt our investment policy for the Lower Makefield Trust signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye?
Aye.
Eyes have a five zero. Thank you.
So then the next item is uh actually an investment policy statement uh for uh the Lower Makefield Township defined benefit uh pension plans, uh both the uh police uh plan, uh the active police plan uh and then um uh also the active uh the non-uniform plan, but as you know, uh all new hires are now going to a defined contribution plan, so somewhat of a legacy uh plan on the non-uniform side. Um again, the uh document is is um consistent with um how the plans have operated uh in terms of uh its equity exposure uh and and sort of the mixing of of the respective asset classes. Uh and again, is is just outlining um sort of the responsibilities of of the pension committee, the responsibilities of the investment consultants uh and the investments, uh the responsibilities of the investment manager. Um and so this was a a document that um RBC, who is the um investment manager uh for the plan, uh provided um something that that didn't get executed previously, so they're they're just sort of cleaning it up. But um again, generally reflective of what you would see in in the space as it relates to a IPS for pension plans.
Uh I move that we adopt an investment policy statement for the Lower Makefield Township defined benefit pension plans.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Yeah. Motion made to adopt investment on IPS for the Lower Makefield Township defined benefit plan made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Granier. Any discussion?
Yeah, Fred, similar question, Dave, uh in terms of the policy statement, I just want to make sure it passes muster.
Yeah, I mean, there's um uh Act six hundred and Act two oh five, especially for police are are very specific gift that targets and things like that that are required. I know Dave's very familiar with that stuff. It's it's a I don't want to say it's uh commonplace, but it it's a very standard a type of um uh uh a plant, which is a good, uh and it's so it's it's responsible, but also takes into account the fact that, you know, it has a fiduciary responsibility to a large number of people, so I think I'm I I saw nothing that was uh out of of uh order at all, so.
Thank you. Then David, you had said that um, you know, they were sort of cleaning things up. Is this hindsight twenty-twenty is something we should have probably had had previously to guide the?
Yeah, I mean, typ- typically you would have, you would have an IPS, you know, sort of governing uh again, asset allocation um to to really instruct the investment manager to make sure that they're consistent with sort of your risk profile and and so forth. Um so again, what what you have before you is is consistent with how they've operated in practice. This is just documenting it uh and uh uh allows us to a- again, refer back to something as as uh as we're engaged with the investment advisor.
Good to have policies and procedures in place that guys. Thank you for getting this.
No, you're welcome.
Any other discussion?
Uh, yep, if I could real quick.
Sure.
Um so with RBC, I know they were here a couple of years ago, and we transitioned uh some stuff from actively managed to indexed for uh all the equities.
Hmm.
Uh we haven't done that on the fixed income side, and and it's also an area where uh PNC had some stuff that was a little higher fee structure. But are we keeping roughly the same, I'm assuming it's been reweighted that the same investments that we had in the police fund from a couple of years ago in terms of the underlying assets?
Uh I don't know in terms of the specific instruments, but I I think it's generally, yeah, gen- generally consistent, yeah.
Okay.
I think there's there's been much, you know, deviation. Um you know, again, as Dave mentioned, you know, we have a fiduciary responsibility, obviously, to fund this benefit uh for employees providing service. Um we have, you know, actuarial targets in terms of rates of return. Um and so um uh, yeah, I I don't, I don't believe that there's been much, you know, deviation there. And as I said, this is just this isn't really doing anything new other than just documenting and sort of memorializing what the expectations are uh of us uh as a client to uh to the investment advisor.
Yeah, and this one has just slightly a little bit more risk tolerance than the one we had previously, so.
Yeah, yeah, and and part of that is has to do with the actual rate of return. Um again, it's using an eight eight percent rate of return, which um you know, is is a little aggressive, but but uh so so we need to, you know, generate some additional yield. And you know, I think is what was communicated by uh perhaps PNC is that um you know, they they believe and and RBC sort of is also reflecting this, that there's some a- a- additional potential for yield by having a little bit more active management in the fixed income space, so.
Any other discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of adopting uh IPS for the Lower Makefield Township Defined Benefit Plan signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye?
Aye.
Eyes have a five zero.
So the next item is uh a proposal, a consideration of acceptance of a proposal from a ranty corporation uh for tree planting on Mirror Lake Road uh at a cost of fourteen thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. Um this is an item that the board uh previously discussed. There was an exhibit uh that showed um sort of the placement of these trees uh along um I believe the frontage of of Patterson Patterson Farm. Um there's thirty trees proposed to to uh to be planted there, um approximately thirty to forty feet uh from uh the edge of uh pavement. And um so the while this was discussed sort of conceptually, there was no real proposal to uh actually plant the 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 trees, so uh we went through the process of um requesting um proposals from uh three nurseries. Uh the uh proposal from RMT Corporation is is the is the low-cost proposal um out of the out of the three options. So we would, we would recommend acceptance of the proposal so that we can proceed with the uh with the planning as was previously contemplated.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Blondie, seconded by Supervisor McCartney on the tree planting on Mirror Lake Road at a cost of fourteen thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars. Ms. Blondie?
Yeah, um, thank you. So Dave, I I'm sure you know that this is uh money coming from uh the Tree Bank, and this is one of the last things that I worked on with the EAC. Goals to kind of have a a vista of maples coming up Mirror Lake, and as you're around that road. Um there was a lot of flexibility by the EAC once they identified the type of maple, but I don't think it's labeled right in the proposal. I think they landed on sugar maples or maybe the super maples, but I don't think the super maples. So I don't know, they don't matter, but unless Jim Bray comes banging on my door, I want to make sure we get the right trees in there.
Okay, um, yeah, we we can uh we can absolutely confirm that. Um it it looked as though, based on, again, the the previous exhibit that was shared with the board uh and I assume reviewed by the EAC, um that there were thirty fall Fiesta Sugar Maples. or Red Sunset Maples. So.
Yep.
Okay, I think that might be a typo and.
Yeah, I think it probably is, but I've gotten in trouble about trees in the past, so I'm very particular.
Yeah, we will confirm that that is in fact Sugar Maple and not Supar Maple, so.
Thank you.
New species. Any other discussion or comments by the board? Any public? No, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, in terms of the planting, is that gonna interrupt any of the farming that's currently occurring on Patterson Farm now?
No, we do.
So it's a distance from where the crops are?
Yeah. And when you when you pass by the Artist of Yardway entrance and you're heading up towards McCaffrey's, there's that meadow, if you would.
Yeah, yeah.
That's where these trees are going.
Okay, so there's not anything being planted there now, so. Okay, yeah, it's a distance. That's safe, okay.
Any other comments?
Please, yes, please. And since, just looking at the warranty. Yeah, I'm with the AC, we look at that stuff all the time, but thank you. When it comes to planting, the warranty is always the biggest deal in terms of watering and deer protection, all that stuff. So I see that they have water and deer protection. Just I want and hopefully we schedule those correctly, but these are all the scissor which trees. So somewhere sometime between April 1st and May 15th, or October 15th and November 30th, if we want to maintain our one-year warranty on the tree. So we just got to make sure from scheduling perspective that they get there at the right time, so we don't void our warranty.
Yep, sounds good.
After that, come up with a plan to keep these trees successful. Otherwise, it's gonna look nice when it's done.
Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of acceptance signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Five zero, eyes have. And me?
So the next item is a consideration of authorizing the award of interim interim pay of interim pay to Chief Ken Kalusi, recognizing his service as the interim township manager for the what amounted to roughly the the second half of 2022, going into into 2023 prior to prior to my appointment. The discussion and recommendation is for consideration of an award of $20,000 for that for that service.
So moved?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made by Supervisor Graner, seconded by Supervisor Blondie to approve an award of $20,000 for Chief Kalusi as for services as interim manager for the second half of 2022 and first week of 2023. Any discussion?
Miss.
Yes, Mr. Graner.
Chief, just want to say thank you for all the hard work. I know it's not easy. I think this week is probably about the one-year anniversary that we started to learn that that our former township manager was leaving, so we had a lot of lot of work to do from about this time till now. And you and other, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the staff as well that stepped up to do do some pretty pretty good stuff, so we appreciate all the.
Well, thank you so much, and as you know, it was my honor and pleasure to serve, and I'd just like to thank the manager, our township manager, Dave Krassner, and all the board members for your consideration, graciousness, this matter.
Any other discussion or comments? Any public comment? I will call the question, hopefully. All those in favor of awarding $20,000 to Chief Kalusi for his services as interim manager signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Eyes have a five zero. Thank you very much to the board, and of course, Chief, thank you very much for your services.
Thank you, sir.
Very highly appreciated. Item F.
So item F is is sort of a continuation. There's not really any action for for you this evening to really contemplate per se, but just wanted to let you know that consistent with the conversation that the board had at your last meeting, we've begun to prepare information for your review and consideration relative to the sort of a broader discussion about the current sort of operating or structural deficit within the township's operating fund. Again, as the board is aware, the township's in a very strong cash position right now, largely resulting from the sale of the sanitary sewer system, and then also the American Rescue Plan Act and the funding that was received by the by the federal government. But that being said, that those are, you know, non-recurring revenue sources that to the extent that there is continued exceedance of of sort of current year revenues and that the current year expenses exceed current year revenues, you can quickly start to eat away at that at that at that fund balance. So we've started to look at that, look at options for the board's ultimate consideration, and really trying to look at this as sort of a puzzle that that you know, we collectively need to work towards sort of figuring out, and because of that strong cash position, we do have the ability to you know, be thoughtful, be deliberate, be strategic in terms of our approach to to this issue. So I did send the board an email the other day, sort of outlining some of the options, things such as home rule charter, which would remove some of the limits on on your general purpose and special purpose millage rates. You can look at we're looking at opportunities to perhaps look at special purpose taxes for certain things. Just a host of services, so I are a host of approaches. So I just wanted to, again, let the board know and let the public know that we're working on this issue and we'll be coming back with really a host of of potential approaches to address this issue, not just a singular approach. And again, given given the position that we find ourselves from a cash standpoint, we have the luxury of being able to do that, so. Happy to address any, you know, questions at this point that the that the board may have, anything that you specifically would like us to look into, look at, as we're, again, trying to provide options for you as 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 this board and future board sort of move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Krassner, and I'll remind the board that everything's on the table at this point, so if there are any questions or comments or remarks to be made, this is the time to begin those remarks, comments, or questions. Mr. Graner?
And for this is actually for you, so the agenda item is really just, we're not, you had mentioned last last meeting, I think it was, that maybe at some point, maybe have a special meeting once we get more information and we have more more to talk about, let's say. So that's not really the point of tonight of this being on the agenda tonight at all. So I want to make sure people aren't like, hey, some big decisions being made tonight, that's just starting a conversation.
This is the beginning of a conversation that will last until we decide what to do with that $1.7 million structural deficit that we have.
And I get, so thank you for that clarification for me and everybody else, but that's that's how I came into this meeting, so I'm not coming in with a whole lot, but I do want to thank our township manager for starting this process, putting together some really, I think, some innovative ideas to address the structural deficit. Depending on, you know, you, Fred, you mentioned a number, depending on how it's addressed, it could be anywhere, I think, from 1.7 to 2.1 million. But it's significant is the main is the main point. You know, how you look at it is just significant, so. I'm looking forward to working with this board and others and yourself to see how we can address that, you know. Personally, I think everybody knows I voted against the last two budgets because I I thought that we were spending more than probably we should have on things that we weren't quite didn't have a big plan around yet. That was my personal take at the time and where we're at now, I'm this, I've always been speaking about having a plan, having a plan a different, and I think this is, I think we're going down the right path.
Yeah, and in conjunction with that, again, as I mentioned, you know, looking at some of our capital demands as well. And so, again, as as was framed, this is really the beginning of a conversation. You know, to the extent that, you know, members of the board have sort of suggestions or sort of things that they want us to look at so that you have all of the information to consider. You know, obviously, we're here as your staff to to try to put that together and synthesize that so that you can, you know, be in a position to make the best possible decision moving forward, so. That that's really the purpose of this, which is just to say, we've begun our work, and we'll continue to work at this and look at a variety of different solutions, not only in the revenue side, but also on the expense side to to try to address this, this, you know, this puzzle that we find ourselves in or the situation we find ourselves in.
And Fred, I, in terms of framing the, how we're going about the conversation, is our goal, from an agenda, future agenda perspective, do you think it's our goal to have this have a plan worked out, let's say, by budget season, so that it could be implemented through the next budget into next year?
Would be nice, yeah. I mean, the way I look at, the way I personally look at is we have a clean slate, and the book, the staff has a total green light from the board to gather the information necessary for us to make those hard decisions when budget season comes. We will probably have special meetings closer to the fall than we do now. But if we seem to need something that that will help us get there, by all means, we'll 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 do what it takes to get rid of that structural deficit as possible for next year's budget. And however we do it, however we agree as a board, you know, it's, we have that luxury of of time, a little bit of time, and we had, we had the luxury now of of doing what's best for the township because we do have that high cash balance right now, but we don't, we don't want to lose it. So, you know, that our manager, our staff is well aware of what they need to do. We've given them the green light at our last meeting, basically. So hopefully, we will work with them, and they will work with us to to get the best solutions possible. Are there any other comments, questions from the board?
Yeah, just a quick question, Dave, I think most of these options that that, you know, I guess we're doing exploratory, you know, a look at, I think most of us are familiar with, with the exception, and I I would think it would be everybody in the public as well, is the the home rule law, without getting too deep into exactly what it is. Can you just give us a little bit of background of what exactly it is, if there's any neighboring municipalities that we would know that have gone that route, and also if there's anything from a from a cost standpoint, from a legal standpoint that we would need to do in order to to change that charter?
Yeah, and Solicitor True Love may be able to also provide some some context here. But in the most general sense, you know, as you know, you're a second-class township governed by the second-class township code, and so essentially, while many may think that you have the ability to do certain things, you're you're bound by that code, and so you're only permitted to do that which is specifically enabled. And so if, for example, if, and related to this discussion, as the board is aware, as the public may be aware, there's there's statutory caps on on, for example, property tax rates, right? You can only go up to a certain millage. And so if a community makes a choice that it wants to fund its services through property tax primarily, and they're up against that cap, you know, without going home rule, they would have to adhere to those those statutory caps or petition the court to get an exception. And the petitioning of the court is really not, you know, something that's sustainable from my perspective long term. So it would free it would just provide for sort of more local governance, if you will, and allow the community to really chart its own course through through a home rule charter. It's a, you know, highly sort of participatory process, which is, you know, involves, you know, ballot measures, the establishment of a commission, the election of commissioners to serve on the Home Rule Commission, and then ultimately a vote on on the charter itself. So it's just sort of enhanced self-governance, governance, if you will, to a certain extent, and permits you to operate in a more flexible fashion, reflects sort of the context of your local community as opposed to being bound by a more broad sort of statute like like the second-class township code in our case. In terms of local examples, I believe Solicitor True Love said Bristol Township is a home rule municipality, as has been Salem, you said, yeah. So they're home rule optional. So those would be two sort of local examples. But there are, you know, a multitude of municipalities in the Commonwealth that have gone through the home rule process.
And just to follow up on that, Dave, the home rule that would require a vote by the existing supervisors or by referendum?
Let me, let me, I'll try to, Dave did a great job, I think, outlining the overall structure of home rule, and there is, and for everybody interested, if you go on the Department of Community and Economic Development website, they have a 109-page tome about home rule, that's if you really want to get into it, it's actually, it's a very, very valuable resource, but it's I would I would advise reading it in chunks, but there are two municipalities, Bristol Township and Vinsalem, that are home rule optional. There are several in Montgomery County, some are actually pure what they call home rule, some are home rule optional. I don't want to get into the weeds as to what that means. To your point on your question about how that process goes, as the township managers indicated, first, there's establishment of commission, and that would be done by ordinance by a board, this board, if necessary, if if it felt was appropriate to establish the process for the commission to be established, which would go through a petition and voting process in either the primary general election, depends on what the timeframe is beforehand. And then once the commission is established, and it's, I think, seven, nine, or 11 members, again, that's something that the the township would want to determine as part of its approach, if it goes in that direction. And then, along with the establishment of the commission is a question, again, this is mandated by statute. The question is either you want home rule, or do you want home rule optional, or do you want the commission to consider both? And then after that occurs, the commission will then have its charge to go forward, and that process can take up to 18 months, depending on which which method that is adopted. And then after that approach, then the commission itself, as the managers indicated, would then have a recommendation that would go before the voters again. If it is adopted, then there's a transition period. So we're talking from beginning 10, I think, roughly at least three years before that process to go. But, you know, if you want to get it started, it doesn't have to take that long, but it can. So I think what's what's important for everybody to understand, it's a very deliberate, open, transparent process that it takes a lot of count, it takes into account a lot of information and and would have to be, you know, I think there'd be a lot of lot of lot of input, I'm sure, given the the activity in this township, and also certainly the members of the board and the staff. You have a lot of a lot of ability and a lot of brains that could weigh into the the process. So I know that's a kind of a 30,000-foot approach, but again, I would recommend if you want to look at something even a little bit, the DCD is a good starting point for that, and it was last updated in 2020, so it's fairly recent.
And I just have one more question, if I could, Mr. Dr. Weiss. So again, the this really basically started because of Falls Township enacting their EIT a few weeks back, in my mind, anyway. I don't know if we ever got clarification on whether or not if Pensbury enacted their NEIT, if that would affect Lower Makefield Township residents, or it would not affect Lower Makefield Township residents. Do you do you know clarity on that? Because I don't know if we ever got clarity.
I think it, we did look at that. I remember speaking to Dr. Weiss about this. We did some background research, some general research. It's our preliminary opinion that Lower Makefield residents would have to pay that, because it will be a school district-wide imposition. So the next question is, you know, what would the Lower Makefield's approach be, if at all? That's something, again, you'd have to, you know, I think, weigh in at the time, if indeed Pensbury does decide to take that approach.
And and just so, you know, to educate the public a little bit, as it stands, because Falls Township has enacted this 1% EIT, at this point, Falls Township is collecting the entire 1% until Pensbury decides to enact an EIT, at which time they would most likely split the the 1%, is that correct?
Yes.
So in the same in the same fashion, if Lower Makefield hypothetically, the. So i- in the same, in the same fashion, if Lower Makefield hypothetically, EIT. Until Pensbury decided to enact their own EIT, Lower Makefield Township would be capturing that entire 1%, correct?
Yeah, I believe that is correct, yes.
If, if we, if we went down that road.
We went first, right.
And we, and we put a 1%, we instituted 1%, we could institute a half percent EIT. And that would be all ours. No matter what Pensbury did.
Oh, so, so if we enacted only a half percent EIT, we would capture that entire half percent?
Correct. Pensbury, if Pensbury enacted, they would enact a half percent. And then we, you know, Pens, uh, Lower Makefield residents would have to pay a half percent to the school district. If we didn't have an EIT and Pensbury, for some reason, enacted a 1%, the whole 1% would go to. Lower, uh, Pensbury, as I understand.
So similar to what is happening in Falls right now, because Falls has the EIT and Pensbury does not. Falls is collecting at full 1% until Pensbury decides that they're going to enact it if and when.
As I understand, Mr. Truelove and state law, yes.
Yeah, that's my understanding too.
All right, thank you. That's all I had.
Yes, yes, yes. Any other comments or questions by the board?
Did James, I had a tidbit for you. When you asked about home rule townships, I was Googling. And if you trust Wikipedia, so, take that for what it's worth, they actually offer a list of, I'm surprised there's a Wikipedia page about this. But home rule townships in Pennsylvania, so just a couple you might recognize. For second-class townships in Southeast PA, True Different Township, Upper Providence and Horsham are all listed as second-class townships with a home rule. So if you wanted to look at those townships as a guide, that might be useful.
And, and just, and just to clarify that. Once we go home rule, if we go home rule. We can use second-class township code as a guideline for governance. But we can also choose to go a different way. It's a much more flexible, it depends on how the commission would write the charter. We could go to a mayor and council, we can go to a council manager. We could go to keep the board supervisors, we could do whatever with, the charter would be basically a local constitution. That would only be superseded by federal and state constitution.
Interesting.
It is. It is.
Yes, there's a follow-up for the board. I'd be happy to, to send a link to the DCD publication, just, just so you, you know, just so you have it. You can, again, that, that's, that's one potential solution and. Among, among others, but we, we can follow up and send that to you tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Crater. Is there any public comment on this subject? Hearing none, we'll go to item G.
So the final item that I had was really just, again, sort of an introduction of, of something to, to sort of solicit some, some feedback. And, and direction also from the board of supervisors related to. A community engagement and analytic tool that, or analytics tool called Zen City. That I happened to previously use in, in my, in, in the community in Sussman Township where I was, where I was the township manager. It, it was, you know, a valuable tool for us. It, it really allowed us to develop a more sort of strategic and intentional communication strategy for the township. And also helped in, in sort of capturing a more comprehensive understanding of, of community sentiments. Relative to, to major sort of policy decisions that the, that the township was, was, was facing. It, it, what, what it does in part is really captures the conversations that are taking place in the community. That are outside of sort of the official channels of, of the township. So, so folks not necessarily commenting on. To the extent that there was commenting ability on the, on the township's Facebook page or through attendance at a public meeting. Or, or through, what, what I would again term more official channels. It, it sort of goes and, and looks at capturing that conversation that's happening in, in. Forums like, like social media. That, that again, aren't directly related to, to, to the township as an organization. Capture some comments as it relates to news outlets, such to the extent that there's a story and. The Herald, for example, the Bucks County Herald, it would, it would, it would capture some of that con, that, that, that conversation and sort of synthesize that information. So that's one of, one of sort of the, 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 the primary purposes of Zen City and, and utility of Zen City. Is to try to get beyond sort of the vocal majority that, or the, I'm sorry, the vocal minority that typically engages in, in public conversation through official channels. And then also provides sort of interactive space for community conversations and engagement. And there's surveying components to it, you know, benchmarking, sort of performance measurement capabilities. And then that's all sort of supported by the backend sort of professional capacity of Zen City in terms of, of their, their data analysts. So again, you, you do have a, a proposal in your packet. That, that's there for informational purposes. There's some literature on the tool. But before, you know, sort of going down this path, just wanted to sort of poll the board, see what the board's thoughts are. See if the board felt that there was some utility in, in perhaps having Zen City come into a presentation. Those kinds of things. So, so again, more of a general conversation this evening as opposed to an action item.
I'll open it up to discussions this time, Mr. Granger.
Generally, I like the concept, right? We want as much interaction, transparency, et cetera, with the public so we can. Get, get great feedback, you know, unfortunately, there's three people in the room tonight. And I think one, one may be a reporter, so he's spreading the word, good word for us. But, you know, we, we're not getting. A ton of necessarily real-time feedback, so anything we can do to increase and improve that. So that we understand what our community, members of our community are really concerned about. That I think that, and honestly, how we're doing is, is, is great. Current, as you probably know, a lot of that right now goes on, you know, we have a township Facebook page, we have Park and Rec Facebook page, we have other. Twitter and LinkedIn, I think we use, you know, we have township social media that captures that a little bit. I think more people may, you know, and, and we also have the new Open Gov stuff that we, that we've implemented, which is great. Where we can get comments and certain things, but that's more related to permits and complaints about specific.
The transaction.
Vote issues. Yeah. So I, I, my wish, main concern slash wish is that we can. Whatever we have access to from a social media, from a other software online approach, that we can integrate. Something like Zen City with that, so we, we get a full picture. So like even, even the ever-popular. I'm going to forget the act, LMT is a great place to live, Facebook, 11,000 some odd members. You know, a lot of people are conditioned to just go comment there. And whether or not we see it, you know, and that's why we started the township Facebook page and, and some of these other things, so we can pull them into this type of thing. So I guess. It's a long way of saying, I guess, that I, I like the concept, but I, I want to make sure. That all of those other features that we're, that people are used to using or that we have at our disposal now can be integrated into that. So we can take advantage of all that and. I don't, it's probably a good idea to have our. Electronic Media Advisory Board take a look, because I know some of those folks work on some of those issues. And they, they may be able to provide some good feedback and would probably appreciate the explanation and.
Yeah, happy to, happy to engage with committee and, and sort of leverage the expertise of the committee. Again, we, we've, you know, as a staff have been working closely with the committee, actually in the last couple of weeks. On issues relative to websites, mobile app, focused on those very issues. Making sure that there's integration, making sure that there's, you know, not. Not a, a ton of duplication in terms of sort of, you know, capacity, capabilities of these respective systems. So I'm happy to, to engage with, with the committee. And try to solicit sort of their input as, as it relates to, to this potential tool. To, you know, again, try to be more effective in our communication, more deliberate, more strategic in sort of our communication. But then also providing a, you know, an interactive forum for folks to get involved. Outside of those sort of traditional official channels. So happy to do that.
Excellent. I'm looking forward to it.
Ms. Coles, you have any comments?
Sure. Generally, I'm supportive of these sorts of efforts. The one thing I do have a concern, social media monitoring is. It has some limitations and there may be some technical limitations about, for example, closed groups. Where people can be speaking about issues where we might never see those. People say, oh, somebody was talking about X in a, in a closed group, and you might not know. So tools that go and seek to parse or scrape those don't always get those. So it's, that might be a, a challenge around that. In general. I would say it's very difficult for all of us to get a, a perspective about what citizens want. And the types of information we get is clearly biased, right? So you think about it, it's like I joke about the grocery store rule, if they're not coming to you there. We don't really run surveys or polling or focus groups, and those are all kinds of different ways. That are maybe somewhat lower tech, but also yield some really good help that way too. Of, of what I would say is people that were not expected to be asked about what their opinion was, right? Regular, I don't want to say regular people, assuming because we're all regular people. But if you, when you knock on someone's door and you ask them, like, that you certainly get a perspective if, if we haven't looked at those things. But yes, I think tools like this can be really helpful. I think we need a broader strategy about how all of our tools fit together. I'm a big supporter of what Open Gov offers. So I'm excited about that. At this point, do we know how many transactions we've gotten from that or?
Jim, do you have?
I just so happen to be looking up that data, just for fun. And since we've started three weeks ago, there have been 173 records created on our site. 137 of them were building permits that were submitted. We collected $28,000 in revenue through our portal in the last three weeks. We've issued 92 permits. We also had a number of citizen requests. I think we've had seven or eight of those. We've had a few right-to-know requests. We've had a few moving permits, a few vacant property registrations. So, so far it's going pretty well. We're still working through little tiny glitches here and there. Where we overlooked a few things as we set it up, but I think overall it's been fairly well received by the general public.
I was gonna say to that, and then, well, have we started to look at how much? The cost savings that we've gotten from Open Gov, obviously, we knew what the expenses were when we invested in it last year. But it's shortening time to building permits, yes, no?
Not just yet, because we're still getting used to the system, but some things are like instantaneous. People put in a moving permit. We have it sent it out immediately.
Okay.
So it's, or a garage sale permit, stuff like that. It's basically instantaneous. It comes in, you review it and you approve it, they pay for it, it's done. So, but over time, it will turn out to be a big savings. Once we get enough data, I'll let everyone know.
Yeah, but the six or, we only have about seven people that have had general comments then? I don't think we've advertised the fact that you can do that as well, right?
We have advertised that, but.
Jim, aren't, aren't they more, again, not to, they're, they're more transactional, sort of reporter concern kind of stuff, right? Is that, is that what it is?
Correct. So if you have a request, a concern, an issue, an observation. Someone noticed that a sign was down, so we forward that to Public Works, so they can replace the sign. Someone else wanted the town to look into something, so it's something we're looking into. So items like that.
Yeah, that's generally very positive.
Share with you a nice little chart later that you could see, it's, it's pretty.
Mr. McCartney, do you have any comments? Okay, Ms. Blundy? Yeah, I'm, I'm, anything that will help further engage the, our neighbors and the residents of Lower Makefield. Make them a more active part of the process, it'll work for me, so. Hopefully, hopefully I'll do it.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll continue, I, I mean, I guess what I'm hearing is we'll, we'll sort of continue the conversation, engage EMAC. Again, look at sort of a broader sort of strategy. I, I do think that, you know, Open Gov is great. For a lot of that transactional stuff, Supervisor Lewis, that, you know, Zen City does provide some of the surveying, sort of benchmarking kind of stuff. And it's, it's, you know, it's. It, it, so I think there, I think there's, I think there's a way to sort of integrate that into, into a broader strategy. And again, we'll start with, with EMAC and sort of solicit their sort of expertise and feedback on, on, on the, on the matter and bring it back to you.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, sir. Good. Any public comment on the Zen City discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to item nine, Solicitors' Report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a, an executive session started tonight at 6:30. All board members were present, along with Mr. Crater and myself. Items related to informational items and personal items were discussed. The executive session was concluded. And, and I'm sorry, Ms. Turney was there briefly for part of that as well. And the executive section concluded between 7:10 and 7:15 when some historical commission candidate interviews were conducted. The only item under my solicitor's report is authorization to advertise an ordinance to vacate Old Ox Valley Road. Some background, for everybody's benefit, Old Ox Valley Road in this particular location is on the west side of. Ox Valley Road, kind of north of Big Oak Road, or what's called also Robert Sugarman Way. Over the years, because of development and some other road widening. Old Ox Valley Road is no longer accessible and useful to the township, its residents and the public, at least according to what we say in the ordinance, and I think it's true. It's been reconfigured by the Commonwealth because of a lot of the work done over there. And frankly, it, it is of no, no use to the township at this point. What would happen is after the ordinance is advertised. If it's then enacted at the next meeting, we would then have a title company define the actual meets and bounds. So we would have that, the recorder digital will accept that. And then the property, if it was, the ordinance was enacted, would actually revert to the adjoining property owners. So they could, you know, be used for whatever they need to within the constraints of the township zoning or any other regulations. So this is really just something, it's more of a house cleaning, but it probably makes a lot of sense that this is of, of no use to the township anymore. So right now, we're just asking that the, the ordinance be advertised and then we can enact, work, work on enacting it at the next meeting. So we just asked for a vote to authorize advertisement.
So do I hear a motion to advertise?
So moved.
Player second.
Second.
Motion to advertise made by Mr. McCartney, second by Supervisor Granier. Any discussion?
One quick question for, sorry. In terms of, I'm just, as I Google, Old Ox Valley, just saying, I'm looking at the exhibits. It's really just that section of what used to be pavement.
Yeah, right.
Next to, kind of that comes off of the, I guess, the tennis courts that are at.
Right. It's near, there's like the, the, the office building on the one side and there's the Wiener property on the other. That's really what we're talking about.
And that little triangular space with the old schoolhouse.
Right, exactly. Yep. That's it.
Okay. Ms. Lewis, did you want to?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
In fact, it would be, I think, ultimately, because we had discussions with Regency about an easement for them, for them to have access. After we vacated, that could be something that they could have a discussion with. In fact, Barbara Kirk and my officers had discussions, I think it was with, with Mr. Peroli. About us, us assisting them to do that, but we can't do anything with that till we actually vacate.
And, and that's my second question, actually, was, I think the way it's written, it's like we're vacating it to the adjacent property owners.
Right.
So there's, I guess, technically probably three separate adjacent property owners?
Uh, at least two that I'm aware of, it may be three.
The, I'm, I'm thinking, what I have in my head are the, the, the folks that own the office building.
Right.
If you want, the folks that own that little triangle piece.
Correct.
Technical schoolhouse would be another, and depending on how far it goes back, Regency would be the third.
They might be, and you probably know it better than I do, but I know that there's a. Uh, the whole point, eventually, hopefully, would be that if, if Regency wanted to acquire an easement, they could do that. That would be something, would be part of the, the next phase of things.
And do, when we, do we have to spell that out in this to avoid any?
I think so.
Okay. Okay. Now I'm done.
A lot of those slides, we've been having discussions with Regency. A lot of those slides, we've been having discussions with Regency over a number of years related to linking Regency one, Regency two. And so there was the traffic engineer developed and provided the Citizens Traffic Commission, I believe, last year, if not the year before, a plan that would involve a path over this property. So is the intent with the ordinance, it would be reverting that back to Regency? If we were to build that path, again, that would be to the township manager, probably is not familiar with the Regency agreement. But there's a set aside for infrastructure funds specifically for the Regency development that would be paid for from those funds. And that bike path would be, or that pathway would be reverted back to Regency for upkeep and maintenance from the HOA of Regency then? Is that still everyone?
No, no. But what's, what's, just like, you know, my memory is just as fuzzy as everybody else's. The Bridge Fund, the money being used that is, that is available will be used in part to pay, if not all, to pay for the pedestrian walkways between the north and south sides of Big Oak Road or Sugarman Way. The lane restrictures, the painting of the, the crossing ways, signage, et cetera, which is now under, I think, design, the design phase still is going to be paid by the Bridge Fund. If there's anything extra, that money can be used to pay for a walkway. But, but this motion to advertise will be just to vacate, you know, as, as
I understand that. And that's why I'm saying this is separate from that decision entirely. This is just the vacation of that property. But the question is, it doesn't impact if we were to, if Regency and the township were to agree upon that project, it wouldn't impact that negatively. Okay.
And I could take the time before the next meeting to clarify that. Obviously, we're just advertising this tonight. There's no enactment. So if we want any more clarity, I'll certainly work with that too.
And that project came before the Citizens Traffic Commission last year? I think before the Township Manager's departure. And there hasn't been, to the best of my knowledge, any follow up with that. So that's why I would be curious. But wait, there's more. You couldn't have just stayed here the whole time.
Basically, we're just about ready to go out to bid for that project. And that will be coming in front of the Board of Supervisors for authorization sometime in the next month.
And is that, does that include the Oxford, old Oxford Valley Road portion or no? It's just the crosswalks, right?
Well, that would be an alternate.
Okay, it's an alternate. Okay. So this is all coming together then in a positive way?
Correct.
Okay. So Dave, as you're researching, I guess my, if we're vacating to the adjacent property owners and we still wanted, and there may be, to Fred's point about there may, if there is money left over, it might be something we could add to the project. Does that in any way prevent us from doing that if the, if the other property?
Before, that's why it's for, it was just advertised tonight. So yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah. So I don't know if we have the capacity to sort of reserve rights in some fashion or some, some sort of an easement that's contemplated prior to the reallocation of it back to the adjacent properties.
Set aside a part that's meets and bounds that lays that out. We'll look at that too.
And there are a number of utilities in that area, although it's not used as a roadway. There's a water line, a gas line. There's overhead electric and utility wires. There's a sewer line, a storm sewer line, and obviously we'd want to have the access easement. So
Easements right there.
Exactly. I think we were talking about a blanket easement.
Exactly. It may be part of what that is already.
Ms. Blondie?
Yeah, and maybe this is for the time when we take up the decision once it's published. But if we're, if we're giving away ownership of the little triangle because it's essentially useless, I would be hard pressed to subsequently authorize money to be spent to pave it. So that, you know, maybe that comes out in what Jim is talking about or it comes out in the next few weeks to help me better understand that.
We'll do that.
Mr. McCartney, you have any comments?
No, I'm thinking the, the property rights, I believe, to one of those owners is residential. Is that right, Jim?
I'm sorry, what was the last word you said?
The property rights of, one of those owners that it would impact is a residential property. Is that correct?
They're both zoned for commercial.
They both are zoned commercial. Okay.
There's a
The one Regency?
You know, I will have to check. It could be that Oxford Valley Road is the dividing line. It could be residential. So I will verify that.
Yeah, can you double check that? Because I don't know if that owner would be interested in having it paved.
Well, the only, the only question that's still in my mind is the land owned by the, the family that where the octedimensional schoolhouse remains are. How, how that would affect that property and how it would affect the historical significance, you know, to the township. But I think it would be good to advertise the, this the ordinance to vacate at this time. And if there's anybody that wants to get involved between now and the the meeting where we adopt, you know, vote to adopt would be, would be appropriate. So is there any other comments by the board? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of advertising to approve signify by saying hi and raise your hand?
Hi. Hi.
Eyes have a five zero. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Trulow.
And that's my report.
Item ten, Community Development.
You have before you the consideration to approve pay application number eight for the Lower Makefield Community Trail Project to Richard E. Pearson Construction Company, Inc. in the amount of $126,155 and seven cents.
Do we hear a motion to approve? Wait a second. Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Granier to approve pay application number eight. Any discussion? Any public comment?
I always ask, how are we doing on budget on this one?
I believe they're balancing out the pluses and minuses at the end, and I believe will be under the budget.
Any public comment? Hearing none of all the question, all those in favor of paying application, pay application eight, please say hi and raise your hand. Hi.
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 Eyes have a five zero. Item B?
We have your consideration, the authorization to execute the 2020 Blood Mitigation Assistance Grant Program Agreement with FEMA in the amount of $208,000. We also got supplemental funding from FEMA for $70,000, which will be able to make the project go forward. FEMA has requested that we execute this grant agreement and they will subsequently issue an addendum to the grant agreement for the additional funding.
Do you hear a motion?
It moved. Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Granier, seconded by Supervisor Lewis to execute the mitigation assistance grant program. Any discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none of all the question, all those in favor signify by saying hi and raise your hand. Hi. Eyes have a five zero. Item C?
The last item, you may recall at the prior meeting, we advised the board that we have the opportunity to submit for a Keystone Historic Preservation Construction Grant for the Slate Hill Cemetery in order to reset several of the grave markers, I think 28 to 35 of them. We had to get the grant application in today. So we, based on the consensus that the board wanted to move forward, we now just need to ratify that we are okay with submitting the grant application.
Oh.
We ratify the submission of the Keystone Historic Preservation Construction Grant for the Slate Hill Cemetery Project. Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Blondie to ratify the submission of the Keystone Historic Preservation Construction Grant. Any discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none of all the question, all those in favor signify by saying hi and raise your hand. Hi.
Hi.
And I do want to thank our Historical Commission, Joe Camerata, Tom Argenti, whoever you say his name, sorry, Tom.
Camerata.
And Helen Hines, who were instrumental in getting the application to the finish line. Thank you.
Fantastic. We'll go to item 11, Supervisor Reports. I have nothing to report. Supervisor Blondie?
I have nothing to report.
Supervisor Lewis?
I have nothing to report.
Supervisor McCartney?
I have nothing to report.
And Supervisor Granier?
I'll follow suit.
Excellent. Any other business? Appointments to board and commissions? Reappointments to boards and commissions?
Sure. Would you like me to make a single motion or a multiple?
Single motion would be fine.
All right. And I apologize ahead of time for any mispronunciations of names. I would like to make a motion to reappoint the following individuals to their respective committees. Citizens Traffic, Catherine Chiacalabria, EAC, Sumya Dharma Verum, Emergency Management, Kevin Treiber, Farmland, Dennis Stedman.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made by Supervisor Granier, seconded by Supervisor Lewis. Any comments? Discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of reappointments signify by saying hi and raise your hand. Hi.
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 Eyes have a five zero. Go to item 14, General Public Comment. Anybody in the room? Anybody online? Hearing none, I'll call for other business one more time. Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.